This entire way. You can see all your food, you know, cooking, just turning out the chimney shit. Every bear in five miles will show up in our food. Just because of smell, right?
This is Tennessee anymore. Tennessee, you can't do the gallows without getting bears walking up on your neck. Just people feed them.
Bring this back.
Thanks, Thomas.
Look at that.
Hey, Sheriff.
We're ready for you now.
Thank you.
I'm just waiting my turn.
You're ready.
Time's up.
So, I do have forty-five minutes? Is that the time allotted?
No.
Only in Hamel talks.
You want Kendall Mann to be right off the bat and keep going?
So, I think you guys got all my information. I think the majority, if you've had a chance to take a look at my budget, the majority of the increases that I have are just going to be pay-related, so that three percent. And the rest of the items on there is going to be at four percent, just because of inflation and stuff, whether it's our medical provider of food and stuff like that. But I will do go through here. There's a few things that there is an addition to, and I'll go through that. Going through the sheriff line, most of that is all pay. I will tell you, there was a change in the detective, if you see that. That was a, it's actually sixty-seven thousand, one eighty-four. That's a decrease. There was a calculation error, and we found that just the other day. So, if you want to mark that, there's a thousand-dollar decrease there.
Oh, so it goes back to the sixty-seven, one eighty-four?
That's correct.
Okay.
It was originally marked sixty-eight, one twenty-nine. We found that was just a calculation error. If you go down, a couple of things that we did do, we have a specialty pay and shift differential. That used to be in with the line item for pay. We separated those because deputies come and go, or they decide they don't want to do this specialty anymore, or they change shifts. It'll be easier to keep track of it that way versus in the actual line item for pay. So, that's why that's new. It's just easier tracking.
Same money, just looking at it differently, right?
Actually, because those don't seem to say are included.
They are included. That was why we zeroed, we zeroed those, didn't we?
They are zeroed, but I still have them in there, and I thought we separated it for that reason.
Back in twenty-four, when we first started that new spreadsheet, you asked for them to be separated.
Yes.
But when we moved on, we had to include a new pay line.
Okay.
Because they have to be moved in.
I'm still thinking in twenty-four.
You can't pay them out of that many lines, or they get different pay classes.
Yep.
Those are zero. I thought I remembered those out on ours.
Yes.
And I think I've got them noted on, because it's already paper that I bring.
On office supplies, just a four percent increase there to five, eight eighty-two. Going down to garage motor supplies, just increased that, just about five thousand, just under five thousand. A lot of that is just because of the oil fires and things of that nature. It's about really all I have as far as changes and increases for the sheriff line. Do you have anything on there? Do you have questions on?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Overtime, are you anticipating a lot this year, or?
Let me go and find it.
You have twenty thousand budgeted, we've spent forty-five so far.
Yeah, no, we're keeping that the same. I think that at the end of the year, what you're going to find, again, when we get into crashes, or if you get into major investigations, I'd rather have that money upfront, knowing I could return it at the end, because we never know.
Okay.
We get, we're one, one call away from major overtime. And so, it's just nice to have that cushion in there, and I'm happy to return that in the next year or last year.
And on uniforms, do they kind of like wait to the end of the year to get, on reserve uniforms and stuff?
Yeah. Are uniforms, they have, they have all year to spend that money.
Okay.
And a lot of them wait till the end of the year, so they see what they've damaged throughout the first of the year. You know, you get into the fields, you get somebody that goes through a pond or in a creek, and they ruin their boots and stuff like that.
Yeah.
All depends. But yeah, usually they get spent at the end of the year. Any monies that's not spent, it's returned. They know, they know that there's a fine date to get that taken care of. It's usually, what, November?
Yeah, because of the paid periods that we have to have bills paid.
Yeah, so, and we tell them, hey, this is your deadline. If you're not going to use it, we're going to send it back.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on that? I'll move into the jail. Again, you see these highlighted areas that I give you guys, that all has to do with just the pay and the increases there. One area that I will tell you that the part-time jailers, you'll see that I've added twenty-five thousand in that. That's a good thing. And I will say that we have four to five full-time positions that we have not filled since the beginning of the year. With our jail population being low as it is, we've opted not to fill those positions until we absolutely need to. Right now, we're on track. If we continue throughout the year, hopefully between ninety and a hundred thousand dollars is what we'll save and be able to return. But there are those instances where I have to take somebody to the hospital, we have to transport somebody to the federal building, or just go pick somebody else up in another state. I need those part-time people to come in and fill them versus paying full-time wages. So, that's why you'll see a twenty-five thousand dollar increase there, but there's going to be a bigger savings at the end of the year. Our jail inmate advocate, we did not get the grant this year, although we did apply for it, so we will be picking up that. It was originally twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty, and we paid for half of that. This year will be forty-four thousand, nine ninety-one. As part of that grant, they did call me and said that they only had so much money to go around. I think it was a hundred and some thousand dollars, and a lot of people that were wanting that money. I asked that if they couldn't pay for that, if they could help us on the backend with some of the supplies that she needs to run the program, the booklets and stuff, and they were going to look into that. I found out today that they awarded us ten thousand dollars, so that is very helpful, and I'm taking that off of, you'll see at the bottom here, I'm taking that off of that line that I asked for supplies. So, yeah, they just called us about three, three thirty, so that was a good sign for us. Office supplies, just a thousand-dollar increase for inflation. Our operating supplies, that's the one I was talking to you about. Because of the way that grant is structured, I can only take twenty-four hundred of what we budgeted off of there. So, if you take that number, that's seventeen thousand, four hundred and thirty, subtract twenty-four hundred dollars, that should be leave fifteen thousand, thirty. That's all I'm asking for this year. The other monies, we're going to use in-house to absorb that, the rest of the cost, because we have to track it, and it has to go directly towards our program.
So, you're saying to take that down to fifteen thousand?
Yeah, it'd be fifteen thousand, thirty.
Okay.
Which fifteen?
Twenty-four, five hundred.
Operating supplies, turn from the bottom.
Take it down to what?
Twenty-four, five hundred.
Fifteen, zero, thirty dollars. Fifteen thousand, thirty-eight dollars. Amazing, old guy was paying attention, actually. Come on, Jamie, you admitted.
Thank you.
One of the things on the commissary clerk that won't show on the line item is the reimbursement.
Say it.
The commissary clerk, the twenty-two.
Yes, I'm getting that.
So, Jill, yeah, we'll want to put that on the, on the reimbursement side, the revenue side.
And I don't think I've got to her yet, have I?
No.
No. I will.
Eleven, five seventy?
Yeah. Is there maintenance?
Yeah.
I've added a little bit, just for inflation. Service contracts, I have a whole list of service contracts. One of those, I will tell you that we had an increase from the request of IT. The new side of the jail, as you guys have been up there and seen, it's all electronics, all the doors are open, the water, everything's maintained in that central room. Last year, this year, we had a problem with the electronics, since our warranty had ran out. SAS was contacted, they're the ones that supply it, they're the ones that fix it. Since we don't have a service contract with them, and the warranty expired, it was on the weekend, it was better salty to have them come in and fix it. So much that we decided we better wait till Monday, where they could do it during your normal business hours, but that's not normally going to be the case. It's going to be on a holiday, or it's going to happen at the worst times where we need to have these fixed. Yocum talked to SAS, they agreed to have a service agreement, they said it'd be the best thing to save us money in the long run. That way, when things need fixed, whether it's in the middle of night, doesn't matter what it is, they can get on their computer, and they can address the issue right away and get it fixed. So, that's part of that service contract increase, is putting them on the board.
Would it make sense to put a hundred percent of that over to the correctional lit? I just got a note there, that makes sense, just to make it, to zero that one out and put it all into, that way you're pulling that out of just one?
All the service contracts?
This one here, just ten thousand.
Yeah, that's a bunch.
Because you say you also have it in correctional lit, why not just have all the service for the jail in, in the correctional lit?
Right.
I just got a note, we can take a look at it.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Next one's, looks like courthouse security.
Right, as you know, we've had some problems with courthouse security. It's been on my mind for the last year. We've started the process of changing everything from policies to training, just making sure that we're doing the job right. If we're going to have a community, if we're going to have a courthouse security, then the people are getting what they're paying for. And hiring part-time people that come in and only work two to three days out of the month, it's hard to keep them on a regular basis to the changes that are happening here. We've started the training already, it started Saturday, everything from firearms, TASER training, I mean, you name it, even policies. We've rammed every, revamped every single policy that has to do with our office of courthouse security. Originally, I was going to ask for two courthouse security officers, but when we reached out to Wells County, they did something, they're having the same situation that we did, of continuity and accountability. It's hard to do it on the other side of the tracks when everything is happening over here. They ended up putting one full-time person in that position, and they're still utilizing that second person as part-time personnel, which is what we're doing now. So, what I'm asking for is, my budget will increase to, for that one person, about six thousand dollars, to have a full-time position in the courthouse security. He'll work Monday through Friday, five days a week. He'll be responsible for working with all the office holders, following the policies, making the procedures, make sure everything, even the training, making sure the guys are caught up on their training and following the policies that we have for special deputy.
And that person, will do all the scheduling too, then?
They'll do all the scheduling. He'll do everything just like we have been doing, but we need accountability partner in that position. I mean, that's the person that everybody sees when they come in and out of that courthouse. We need to be following the policies the same every single time, and we just don't have that with people that are part-time. They're missing things, and we just, it's not a luxury ethic that we can afford.
Is it going to be, and maybe this is a question another time, will it be sworn officer?
Special deputy.
Special deputy.
So, they will follow the same guidelines as my jail staff, their special deputy, they'll be armed, they'll go through the exact same training as full-time officers.
Right.
They're going to be able to do their own case reports, if they'll do incident reports, they can direct, or their conversations can go directly to county commissioners, keep us in the loop of what's going on, but basically just be the accountability partner over here at the courthouse that we should be getting.
That's my guess.
I mean, we've been operating, fortunately, but we've been operating, and I can't think of any word in county government or city government where we use part-time personnel for full-time positions. It was good when we set it up, because we were able to save because of the benefits, but I still think it's a luxury that we can continue if we want accountability.
Well, like you said, if you've got somebody that only works every two months or something, and if there's new things that go up, how would they know how they're going to keep up with training? It'd be very tough.
Or if we have a situation where somebody's maybe been banned, or somebody we're looking for, or somebody that's bad, they won't know what happened two, three weeks prior to, unless you have somebody there that's full-time that knows the, that knows the direction. So, that's what I'm asking for this year.
So, you're looking at the thirteen oh oh five, keeping that one, the security coordinator, fifty-three thousand, four fifty-six, but you're eliminating the thirteen thousand line items, security officer, special deputy, and moving that amount up to part-time?
Yes, that's correct.
So, we'll need to move that amount up there.
All this is going to have to be reworked, because again, when I originally did this, I was going to ask for two. That was my goal. But again, when I reached out to other people to find out what they're doing, are they doing the exact same thing? Wells County had a similar situation, and I felt that that would work best for Huntington County right now. If it's a problem down the road, or we feel like we need to address it further, then I'll leave that up to next year after having.
So, that's working out for Scott pretty good, then?
Yeah, we talked to their courthouse security officer. I mean, one of the questions I even had was, if you know Chris Michael, he worked with him. Kirk Powell's actually the security officer over there now. He was a deputy that I worked with, that I worked on nights. He went to the federal building, and now he's back in Wells County. He said that having two, he's glad the way they're doing what they're doing. It's easier to have part-time people come in than have two full-time guys. So, it made sense to me, and I thought it would work best for us.
But that one full-timer's going to have the knowledge of everything.
You got it.
And keep everything.
You have one guy informed and all that, so.
Correct. Sounds good.
So, that's what I would ask you guys to consider, and obviously, we can rework the numbers however you want.
Okay. So, ready for lit?
Yep. So, the first part of that, my pay is correct. I will tell you, the lieutenant captains, chief deputies, actually, it was Chief Hamel noticed that his pay was marked twenty-five hundred dollars more than what he should be receiving, so I want to make sure you guys have the most updated numbers. For lieutenants, that number should be one forty-nine, five fifty-two.
Five fifty-two?
That's correct. The captains should be seventy-six, five forty-four. And for the chief deputy, eighty-four, two forty.
And does that ninety-three oh nine reflect the three percent of those revised numbers?
Okay. Anything else on that? Going down to our retirement, you know how we do it, our, we've had a lot of young guys, and we always pay up front, and One America always gives us our retirement numbers. They have a high number, a middle number, the low number. For the last fourteen, fifteen years since I've been in administration over there, we always operate off that middle number, so that's what you see represented there, that's to keep that retirement fluid. And that's five twenty-nine, eight zero three. I think there's like a twenty-four thousand dollar increase on that, but again, that's just because we've added so many young guys. Fire replacement is doing well, keep that where it is. One of the savings I'm hoping to tell you about here in a little bit is our video equipment, the Flock camera system. We signed an agreement with them in twenty-twenty-four. We're about the only county surrounding us that doesn't have the Flock system. It is currently sitting at somebody's desk at the state level, and it's been sitting there for eight months. So, at this point, we've paid, we haven't paid for it, but there's a contract in place, and that money's sitting there, and they're waiting for, once I get approved, once they put the first camera in, then we have to start paying. The chief and I were talking today, that at this point, if they put it in October, and they tell us in November they're going to put the first camera, I'm going to wait and tell them that I'll give you the bill. You can send me the bill in January one, and we're going to save that money, because we've gone the whole year with nothing to show for it. So, if you look at that, we could probably scratch that thirty-nine nine, nine hundred for this year, and I'd like to roll that over to twenty-twenty-six requested budget.
So, not the eighteen, but the thirty-nine nine?
Please take eighteen plus the thirty-nine nine, or take the eighteen out?
Just take the eighteen out.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on that? We're down to utilities next. Utilities, we always increase every year. We increased it this year for inflation to two-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand, five hundred, but if you look back at the years past, right now, we're set on tap, probably only spending two-hundred-and-twenty thousand. So, I'd like to reduce that moving into twenty-twenty-six by thirteen thousand. I think we'll still be flush, and I'd like to do an even amount of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and if we can stay on tap with our current inmate population, I should be able to come under that even in twenty-twenty-six. Again, there's ebbs and tides to that based on our inmate population and the water. If the water rates go up, if I get thirty more inmates, that's all going to change. But we've been pretty steady so far.
You want two-fifty for twenty-six?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the two-eighty-three. I'm going to have money left over this year, and I'll tell you about it here in a minute.
Two-eighty-three to two-fifty.
That's correct.
One of the things we talked about too was possibly moving that up to the correctional lit, get that out of the PS lit, move that to the correctional one, so. These are all things to consider when we go to workshop to see, you know, what the, what the balance is of where the lit's coming in, but I think the correctional lit's going to be able to absorb some of these off of the public safety lit going forward. We were limited, just for your benefit, Jamie, we were limited to only twenty percent of the correctional lit could be used for anything other than bond, and so that fund built quite substantially, because the bond payment was stagnant, and lit went up. So, now, there, there is a pretty healthy bal, balance in there that we could start using to offset real jail costs.
Because we're not limited anymore.
Yeah.
Yep.
To offset real jail costs versus trying to do it out of the public safety lit.
Of course, that'll all change next year.
Well, it's all lit next year, so it doesn't necessarily matter, but.
Okay.
All right. Medical care for inmates, nothing changed there, right?
Yeah, I, I do, I do want to address one thing. I'm going to have him look for it, but you asked me a moment ago about the commissary clerk.
Yes.
That is something that we are taking under our line. I got to find it in there, but we are taking that over. That was on the misdemeanor fund, that's what it's at.
You were right. Half of us in the misdemeanor, and half of it was in county general, we talked about.
Yes.
But it wouldn't zero that line out, it would, it would actually, we would just need to add a reimbursement line.
Correct.
We have to pay it out of that line. We just need to.
It's in the middle of the one-thousand page. I've got it, I just haven't got to it yet. It was something you asked me about, and I just hadn't got to it yet, and I thought maybe I bypassed it, so, but I've still got it coming up, so I just want to make sure I corrected that.
Yeah, eleven, five seventy.
Yeah.
Well, it's eleven, five seventy on general also.
That's right here in the general. Oh, okay.
That's why, we did go past it.
Eleven, seven five.
I've got it under.
You got half of it under misdemeanor and half of it under.
Correct, and that's why I was going to address it under misdemeanor fund.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
You asked me that at the top, man, how did I miss that? Just haven't got to it. Under twelve thirty-three, the lit correctional.
Okay.
Jail operating supplies, that's a five thousand dollar increase in that, and that just has to do with the, the four percent for inflation. I can wait. Did you find it, John? Did you guys find it?
Yeah, we did.
Everybody good?
Twelve thirty-three. Keep going. Twelve thirty-three, all right, twelve thirty-two, sorry.
I've got way too many line items, sorry. So, looking at our building repairs, you'll see there's an increase from fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty to seventy-five thousand. I will tell you, that kind of number, talking to Phil, the increase for that is, because as you saw for the first time since I've had to come up here and talk to you guys, we're starting to have to fix things in the jail since the big remodel. Things aren't being built like they used to. I still have an old side of the jail. Things are going to continue to fall apart. I hope that they don't. That's never the goal, but we need to prepare and plan for it, and I got to get things fixed when they need to get them fixed. We had the water damage that took place that I came for you guys here a few months ago, and we had an emergency. Go ahead and get that paid meeting. We don't know in the long run what kind of damage that may have caused because of the hard water. Hoping it didn't cause anything, it may not be an issue that's addressed for me, may be the next sheriff, but the point is, we want to have some extra padding in there in case we still have more issues with things breaking down. Again, I got a new jail, they ain't making it like they used to, guys. It's not like Grandma and Grandpa's washing dryer. Things are breaking down a lot faster than what they should be. It's disappointing. And I still have, like I said, we, we made a huge amount of modifications to the old side of the jail, it's still an old side of the jail. There's still things that are going to have to be fixed, so that's the reason for that increase that I'm asking for.
Yeah, so for twenty-twenty-five also, we, on that jail building repairs, since we approved that in July.
It's showing.
It's showing zero right now, so we'll want to make sure that we capture that for the remainder of this year, because obviously, we had the emergency spend of fifty-seven, and then whatever that was that we approved at the July meeting, we'll want to put that into twenty-twenty-five, just to make sure we have that covered. I think our total is close to three hundred.
Yeah. Moving on, hospital and medical, just a four percent increase in there, and that's from our QCC, they're our healthcare provider, and that's just for new inflation. Meals for prisoners, we just rounded that up, eight hundred dollars, and I will tell you, we're right in between a dollar and eighty-two dollars per inmate per meal, and we serve approximately three-hundred-six thousand meals a year, which is a lot of numbers. And she's done pretty good operating off that budget, so. Yes, thanks.
Wish I could feed my kids for a dollar seventy-four meal.
Right. You can't.
Send them to jail.
You guys are going to say, send them to jail, you can't.
I think now we start moving to Fund eleven seventy-four medical care for inmates, no change there. Any questions?
None of those changed, right?
No, the only one I, next one is the misdemeanor fund, and that's what we were just talking about. We did have a line item in the general, general budget for our commissary girl. We used to pay half out of misdemeanor, half out of general fund. Now, we can go ahead and take that all over ourselves, and so, it'll be half misdemeanor and half commissary with the reimbursement.
Well, as I said, you can't pay her out of commissary. We'll still pay her.
I added it, I added it to mine.
I did too. It's on my sheet.
But the point is, it won't come out of general fund, we'll end up paying for it out of commissary.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, it won't show on the line item.
Perfect.
But we'll get it, we'll get it captured.
Okay. Sex and violence offender, that money stays the same. Continuing education, there's only two thousand there, that doesn't change. And our K-nine, that number, that does not change.
You got zero in there.
I've got one thousand fifty-four.
You got zero.
Well, let me follow you on that.
Which fund?
Our K-nine fund.
We have nothing to study it.
Well, that's a tough one.
We can do an additional percent in the year.
We need to do that.
It shows that I have seventeen thousand, five hundred and ninety in there.
That was for twenty-twenty-five.
Yeah. Yeah, and we're still getting donations, so I know that that number's either higher, and I don't know why that's zero. I will fix that.
January first, we'll do that, that first meeting in January.
Okay.
We'll have to advertise it early.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I know there's plenty of money there, because that's what we pay everything out of our K-nine funds on the.
So, each, every line is the same as twenty-twenty-five with K-nine?
It'll be the same amount.
It'll be about the same amount, that's correct. We've had some donations that came in since then, so that may be.
We just won't be able to budget that. This year, we'll have to wait till January.
Okay. I'll see you in January.
December, December to advertise it, right?
December to advertise it, right?
It'll be early January, we can advertise it.
Still be alright.
And I'm sure you guys know, our K-9s, both our K-9s is all completely community-funded out of businesses, organizations, so that's what that is. It's not budgeted monies. So lastly, I just wanna end with this real quick, just so you guys are aware. Between all the pay deficits and what we're trying to save this year with our utilities, the grant that we got, we're taking over the commissary gal, we're sitting at $225,410 cents that we're trying to keep. Let me take those words back. I'm trying to not budget or change by the end of the year. That's how much money that may have been budgeted or that we've saved that is gonna save you guys money, I guess is my goal. On top of that, you know, we take care of a lot of our cars. We spent about $150,000 in taking care of our cars. $60,000 of that comes from you guys and the community, but we pay for the lion's share out of our commissary and also to equip those cars. Car prices have gone up, and it costs us about $15,000 per car now to get them equipped. It's crazy. So if you know anybody that's in the car business, if they want a great gig, that'd be the place to get into, because it's expensive. Allen County, state police, we're all using the same guy anymore, because it's just dwindling.
That up Columbia City.
It's hard to find anybody to do it.
That up Columbia City.
It's in Columbia City, yep.
Same guys.
Yep, same guys. I think Huntington City, I think everybody around us is now using there. Obviously, you know the federal holds between that and the DOC holds. We brought in about 1.5 million this year, just to keep you guys abreast. We're still sitting at $307,689 that we're waiting for the state to reimburse us. The last we've received any money for Level 6 holds was in April of last year.
So you're saying they owe us $307,000?
They do. The state does.
I just wanted to repeat that, just.
We have inquired multiple, 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 multiple times.
Everybody across the state.
Yeah.
It's not just this. Marion County was 1.7, I saw.
Yeah. There are millions of dollars in the hole, and so when we've asked when they're gonna pay us, they don't know. They don't know if they're gonna pay us in a lump sum. They don't know if they're gonna stretch it out over years. The only thing we're told is, they are going to pay us. So I just wanna make.
Easy way to budget, right?
Checks in the mail.
I can budget if I don't have to pay my bill.
But eventually, obviously, we'll be made up. But so far, what we're hoping to do by the end of this year with the DOC holds and everything, we're sitting at 1.75 million that we are going to either save or bring back into the general fund. So I know sometimes we come up here a lot, but we also don't often talk about the monies that we bring back to make up for those differences, and I wanna make sure that you and the public is aware of what our staff is trying to do to make up for that. Do you guys have any questions for me on this budget?
Good coverage.
Okay. Like I said, I will get the other one figured on the K-9 fund, Jill, and apologize for that.
Appreciate it, guys. Thank you very much.
What's that?
How did I do?
You did good. You did good.
All right, Tim, come on over.
Good evening, guys. Good evening.
Hi, Tim.
1222 first, PISA fund, yeah, sorry, the 911 fund. Majority of the change from 2025 to 2026 budget is the raise that was the dispatch got in April, and just catching up through the budgeting process. I've tried to pare back a few things. Our education and training budget, I cut some money out of that because State 911 is paying a lot of our training now, and so it's just a matter of turning in our receipts, actually, turning in invoices, they pay it, we don't even have to pay it upfront. So we're gonna go with 3,000 this year instead of 6. I don't think that's gonna be much of an issue, because the portal we use our training on gets covered with 911, and so our certifications don't cost us anything to give. The other place where I tried to trim was, oh, travel expenses. It's very much the same thing. State 911 picks up some of the cost of our education and travel, so we just haven't used as much. I'm trying to right-size it a bit. I'll admit, the equipment line has gone, I increased. We've been asked to at least consider that there may be increased costs in our equipment. A lot of our equipment comes from outside the United States, and Motorola in particular is concerned about what the cost of some of their product is gonna be over the next year or so with the tariff things, it's still a little bit up in the air for them, but they, that's why we're trying to be patient, wait for them to come up with good prices. Anything in there that looks off to you, I'm happy to answer your questions. For the 4020, you guys think we can move on?
Yep.
The PISA fund, 4020, the, again, the majority of this, I think, is due to the raises we got in April for the dispatch crew, and so if you see the 11625 line will show that the budget for dispatchers 41 and his 517, you also notice that we haven't spent much this year because we've been shorthanded with our full-time dispatch. That's why our overtime and part-time budget is a little large this year. I will tell you that I budgeted a little bit more for both of those lines next year, and maybe it's good karma, because since I've done that, I've had two people that have experience that have asked if they could possibly come back. So we may be fully staffed by the end of the year, and I just can't hardly believe in good fortune, so I don't wanna jinx it, but.
You just did.
I don't believe in that stuff, right? But it would be really helpful, and it would also obviously run our overtime and part-time numbers down quite a bit if we were fully staffed. The rest of it's pretty much the same or just a little bit less than I think we've had in the past. Questions at all?
Appreciate what you do.
Good job.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello. Health Department. Okay, so we're looking at 1159 for the Health Department, so just kind of, as we look at these two budgets that we're gonna be discussing, we know that a lot of our money in the past two years has been from this fund from Health First Indiana, which is 1161, which we'll look at next. We know that that funding got cut dramatically from the state, and so we've had to rework some of our budget. We, Huntington County are in a little better of a position than some other counties, which grew their health departments because of that money. We did not grow our health department. We utilized a lot of local organizations to carry out some of our key kind of missional roles that were mandated by the state, and so we're at a little better of a situation than with, compared to other counties. So we did have to move some positions back and forth a little bit, so if you're looking at 1159, we put back in, the health officer and the nurse back into the 1159 budget, which we had moved out into 1161 previously. So that's kind of the difference in our 1159 from previous years. Otherwise, a lot of our supplies and all of our other lines are pretty much unchanged from previous years. Any questions about 1159?
It's like vaccines are up three grand.
Um, yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
It is, I'm not gonna lie, it's gonna be a challenge to add those two positions back in.
So we'll have to have a discussion about that, and I think we can kind of, we can try to figure that out. You know, where our wiggle room may be is in 1161, is where we may need to find some wiggle room in there.
Might need to.
Yeah, and I think we'll just need a little better of.
Yeah, we've got budget workshop coming up in September, so between now and then, you know.
Right. So we're trying to balance that with trying to still meet our kind of key requirements that we're obligated by the state to fulfill, so that's kind of where we are.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're expecting 191,000?
Yeah, that is the number that we're gonna get for 2026. Yeah, so it went down from 717 down to 191. Yeah. Yeah, big ouch. So, you know, we'll see where that funding goes in 2027 and onward. There's some optimism. It may change a little bit, we're not totally sure, but that's where we were. There was great hopes for, you know, state funding for this, and I think they expected to see public health outcomes in two years, which is just not how you see public health outcomes happen. It takes a little bit.
A little longer than two years.
Two years to really see the fruits of your labor, and so, you know, the things that we were doing in Huntington County was, I think, really good of equipping a lot of organizations to do a lot of good work, and we'd like to see that continue, but we'll try to figure out how to be as efficient as possible with that. But, yeah, any questions about that?
You were thinking $2 a pack, they could throw some more money back in Health First.
Right.
I said that.
Right. Which is, a lot of times, you know, in the past, that's where a lot of cigarette tax and settlement money has gone, is the health departments in Indiana, and so we'll see if that helps support health departments in the future, because that's kind of our main, one of our big focuses.
Soon you keep people to keep smoking.
That is, I'm not. This is all I want.
I knew you would answer that question.
Sorry, he was just there.
Well, health of our citizens is pretty important.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we know that cigarette tax is one of the biggest ways that you get people to stop smoking, and so it's a pretty evidence-based manner to get people to stop smoking, so we are excited to see what that does provide, because, you know, in Huntington County, we know that we have a big issue with tobacco abuse, and especially with, in pregnancy, our numbers of women smoking when pregnant are very elevated, and so that's some of our work that we've been doing with, like, Indiana Family Care Center and WIC, and trying to address certain very kind of specific issues that we have in Huntington County versus other counties.
You guys have anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Phil Meister?
Good evening, all. Now that you guys have a lot of questions, I'm just gonna run through some of the highlights or the bigger ticketed items. We'll start with 9670, and that's this fund that me and Jill worked together, and we moved and created the county operations, we moved all the employees, cleaning team, all that into that 19 item. And then if you wanna jump to the courthouse annex, which is 0161, the larger ticketed items are gonna be utilities. I'm concerned this year that we're not gonna be, or make utilities, so I increased that by 21,000. The annex is just minimal. I did put a line item in there for a vehicle replacement for the white truck, just kind of start that line item moving forward. Fuel for the courthouse, the truck, that's pertaining to the increase, and that would be pertaining to asking for the additional employee, maintenance employee for the courthouse. And then I'll jump to 9620. The larger ticketed items there is repair and maintenance. We have some in the Sacred Heart Building on the upper two floors, we have some valves that need to be replaced, like we did on the main building, so I have budgeted for some of those to be replaced. I have a service contract line item for a maintenance tracking recorder line item in there for 5,000. I also put a vehicle replacement in there for the red county truck that's out there for 5,000. And like I said, the additional, we'll be asking for the additional employee for 26. A lot of those items that were increased pertain to that. So I'll answer any questions from there. And Kendall, I did look at utilities, we'll talk about that a little bit more.
Okay. Yeah, I was looking there, it's, you might have a little wiggle over on the O'Donnell, because it looks like you're pacing about 80 versus 93. So that might be enough to offset your courthouse shortfall.
Yep. Yep. Yeah, I looked at that after we spoke, and I'll take a bigger look at that. I know the last two months, obviously, it's been hot, I just, we just paid the largest electric bills we've paid, so.
Yeah.
Other than that, they're all, they're pretty much the same.
Okay. I don't think you guys have anything. Thanks, Phil.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Hi, guys. Emergency management, I'm Robert Jeffers with the comments floor. I have three budgets to go over tonight, and I'll give you the highlights, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to explain. Fund 1,000 is our main emergency management budget, and it's increased $200 for longevity because of the time we have in. I added a line that I wanted to discuss, $1,200 for medical supplies, and then out to the side, it says PPE gloves, and it's for a couple of other county departments that we supply gloves and sanitizers to. We were buying this equipment with the ARPA grant that expired last year, and I'm using up my inventory. I've talked to these other departments and said, I'm gonna request a little bit of money to keep you guys supplied, but if you don't get it, you're gonna have to budget for it yourself. So that's where we stand on that. So I was asking for 1,200 there. I increased the fuel a little bit. The fluctuating gas prices kind of bother me. They're up, they're down, they're through mine, and at 339, but just to be on the safe side, I added a little more. Requested another 100 for uniform and clothing, bring it up to 1,000. And then get down to the telephone line item. I made a mental mistake there, and I was requesting 2,300, and I find from my past spending, the most I ever spent was 1,091 back in 2022. So if you could pencil in just 1,200 for that request, it won't be 2,300. That's line telephone 32.
32, 300. So we could probably knock a grand off of this year, too, right?
Yes.
Make that 1,200 for broke.
Yes, sir. I'll address that with Jill and the obligation.
Yeah, and you're committing not to spend.
Yep. Uh-huh. Okay, going to the next page, added $50 for utilities, just because of inflation. Dropped that vehicle repair line down, $1,200, because we have three new vehicles, and we're not having the expenses that we were having. Then the last line item, adding 5,000 annually to the vehicle line, that kind of gives it a boost, but makes it look like we're budgeting more money, even though we are. But actually, if I take the vehicle line item, the PPE line item, and the longevity, that more or less makes the 11,285 increase in the budget, bringing us up to 168, 351, if my math is correct. So I realize it is a little increased, but the numbers explain why, and mostly the vehicle. Any questions on Fund 1,000? I have two more really good ones. Okay, 1152, emergency planning, write to know. I'm requesting a budget of $9,813. Nothing's increased from last year, actually, it's down $527 from last year's request, and the request for 9,813 comes from a balance of $26,672.3. That was my current balance today. Any questions on 1152? Okay. The last one is 4103, that's Civil Defense Donation Fund. That is down $1,250, giving us a total of 7,700, and we currently have a balance of
Thanks for what you guys do.
Thank you, Derek.
Appreciate it.
Any questions on any of the funds?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. You were down on all three.
Yeah.
He's the only one.
He's the only one.
You're the winners, boys.
Thank you. See you back next year.
Thanks. Okay, wait some measures. See you, Steve. See, Steve?
Hello? See all the same faces, I see. Well, I'm the one. The only thing I needed to change in what last year's budget was, I think it's on seals and et cetera, what that's for is, I need more gas pump.
Stickers.
Yeah, well, I always need stickers every year. That's the only thing I needed to change.
Okay. You guys have any questions? I really don't.
Pretty small budget, pretty consistent. Appreciate you coming in.
Yeah, thanks for coming in.
I will give you a little bit of information that this is my fourth notice of my last year.
And that's true.
So he's gonna get more.
26 years, that's something I've really liked doing, and of course, I couldn't do it full-time, but it's good. 26 years actually puts me number one in the whole state for seniority.
Oh, wow.
Waiting some measures.
Thank you.
We are ahead in some.
It's a necessary position.
The other thing, I've been on the board of directors of the state for like 14, 15 years. I'm not going for the record. The record was my predecessor. He had it for 51 years.
Holy cow.
Oh, wow.
The guy, I can't think of his name now, the, he was over here, you know who I'm talking about? Bob Hensley.
Hensley?
Oh.
Yeah, he had it 51 years.
51 years.
I'm not going after that. I guess that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for coming in.
Yeah, it's been a hot one this year.
Yes.
A little bit behind, there's no hotter place than Asshole at Agastya.
Take care. Thank you.
One of the things I wanna highlight on ours was the bond payment. We talked a little bit during the commissioner budget, possibly moving that over to courthouse queue. We'll see how everything comes out on the balancing, but see if they can pick that up since they're gonna, they're gonna basically get a windfall of the max levy because of the way the rates work.
So we'll work that out during the workshop?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want everybody to highlight that, so don't forget to look at that.
Okay.
Other than that, I didn't see anything.
Trim back your travel expense a little bit, because we do have that twelve-seventeen fund that we use, and when there's state fall meetings, it's taken out of the program for it.
There's still time to register for the AIC, September twenty-ninth through October second. If you have any questions on that, I'd be glad to help you out. There will be a County Council Association meeting on the twenty-ninth, the first day of that conference. It's down in Fringslake Resort.
We already talked about the lit.
That's probably why I couldn't find it.
Well, I think it was on both, and then EMS, that's just basically an estimate of what we think the EMS list's gonna generate on that, so there's little actions to go. Next is community corrections, last but not least.
Good evening again.
Is it four? One for each of you?
One for each of you.
You don't need them all.
Wow, I was trying to figure out what it was, but now I see it. Now I need it.
Oh, sorry, I did that wrong.
Okay, so until today, we've never had to come before council to request money for community corrections, and community corrections itself has been in operation in Huntington for the past thirteen years. So I, I think that that, unfortunately, I wish we weren't here today either. We've been able to completely fund our programming through grant money and project income, which are, which is user fees. So we're here because our biggest grant, which is our Department of Corrections Grant, has been cut this year. It's cut, it was cut statewide. The IDOC actually did an eight-million-dollar cut throughout the state. There were lots of programming that just got cut completely. So we were still, ours wasn't cut as drastically as a lot of other counties were, but we are also losing a lot of other grants that we have, that the state is just not renewing those grants. So we're losing a lot of our funding sources. Leslie and Seth have worked their magic and have been able to adjust our budget and check revenue so that the amount we're asking for today, which you should all have, is a hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars. And the line item for that would be for our group insurance. That's a number that could be less, depending on how many people, of course, take insurance, that could, that could be a little different, it could be a little lower, but that is what we, we have put in the budget to ask.
What's the assumption on, on that insurance number? I know you guys assume all family when you're applying for a grant, is there a way that we can get that number of who actually is doing that now, at least so we can kinda see what the reality is?
So they've worked, Stephanie actually is who helped them come up with that number based on this year's, who's been already taking insurance this year. So it's based on a formula recommendation from Stephanie to use that formula for that cost for insurance?
This is?
Yes, the hundred-and-forty-five.
That's where the one-forty-five came from.
Exactly, yeah.
But that's based on actual, or is that based on?
That's based on actual this year, and then annualized over that entire year, so from January first of this year's what it's based on, correct? Jump in if I'm incorrect. We did add ten percent to that figure. Stuffing figures for commissioner insurance a little bit differently, but when I talked to Leslie exactly, we tried to measure each current employee, because they have been there for a while, and then Stephanie recommended a ten percent increase just for the unknowns for next year, so that's how we established that number. But it's current elections of.
So how is this gonna get managed with... Because I would assume if we, if we, if we approved this, we would roll that into the...
That would be the best way to do it.
We would roll that into...
Roll that into the commissioner's line item, just because the way the payroll system runs and happening benefit groups, with so many different funds and different places that insurance can be paid out of, this is truly county general, so it's best just to lump it all together.
Yeah.
So I, I actually, and I know there may be lots of questions, and hopefully I'm gonna answer some of those for you, but I am, when I'm talking about this, just so everybody understands exactly what we're talking about, community corrections is kind of our umbrella, and then under that, we have work release, and then we have community supervision. So we're kinda divided this into two, two separate parts is how our budget kinda works. So work release versus community supervision, which that includes all of our other programming, except for pre-trial. Pre-trial is funded completely separate, and it's completely pre-funded, but our electronic monitoring, our cam, all those are under community supervision. So I am going to, this is kind of our revenue projection on how we've got to here. So we have projected our project income, which are our user fees, essentially, that's what project income is. And we've been fortunate that we haven't had to use very much of it, so it's accumulated, and we've really done that on purpose, because with grants, you just never know when they're going to stop funding you, so we've kinda been, been hoarding that a little bit, I guess, to say. So as you can see on there, as of July thirty-first, should have, or had, five-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand dollars, a little more than that, and in order to cover our expenses through December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-five, after using all of our grants that we currently have, we'll need to use two-hundred and, a little over two-hundred-and-eleven thousand of that. So that leaves our project income balance at three-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand. However, projecting our project income or our revenue from August of this year through December of this year, that should bring in over a hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars more. So as of January first, we should be sitting on a little over four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars of project income to use towards twenty-twenty-six's budget. So on the, the next box, our community supervision budget is, we have on here, this is after grants, is three-hundred-and-four-thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty dollars and fifty-five cents. Our work release is a hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars and eighty-two cents. So you can see the total we would need is almost one-point-two million. So if we take the four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars off of that amount, we get to the seven-hundred-thousand dollars. So then, if we get the hundred-and-twenty, one-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars from county general, then we are projecting our revenue to collect through that project income again for twenty-twenty-six at five-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand. So that would mean that we need to collect per month in twenty-twenty-six, a little over four, forty-six thousand dollars a month in order to do that. So... We do have, we've been looking a lot for revenue sources, additional revenue sources to help this, and one of the first things that we're actually going to implement as of September first of this year is we're going to increase our daily fees for work release and also for other community supervision programming. So for work release, we will increase our daily fee at least twenty-five percent. It's eighteen dollars a day now, or a certain percentage of your income, and we're gonna do a flat fee of at least twenty-three dollars. That's a little over twenty-five percent, and, and how we kinda came up with that is, we looked to all the community corrections, work release programs throughout the state to see how much they were charging, and it was anywhere from fifteen dollars a day to the highest was twenty-eight dollars a day, and that was Whitley County, was twenty-eight dollars. So we don't want, you know, we don't wanna make it so people, we'd rather go to jail than, than pay the money, so that's why we're setting on the twenty-three dollars. We can look at this again, I think we need to at the beginning of the year, and all counties are looking at this, because as I indicated, it's being, everybody's, everybody's budget got, got cut throughout the state, so they're all having to look at increasing funds. Then for our electronic monitoring fees, so this would be the other side, not work release, but the community supervision, we're looking at an increase of about fifty percent. That, that program's been ongoing for a lot longer, the electronic home detention, and we haven't increased, we have not increased it in, in quite a while. We began in two thousand thirteen. Yeah. For the electronic monitoring, so yeah, that's been, gosh, that's a long time, yeah, twelve years. So we, currently, it's twelve dollars a day, and we're going to probably increase that to twenty-five dollars a day. We're also, for both the community supervision side and the work release side, we are increasing our initial intake fee, there's laundry fees for work release, there are other fees, and we are increasing all of those fees to try to build up our project income more.
So I guess my concern is, is that if I'm looking at this right, you need a million two to fund it, so you really need to get to a point where you're bringing in about a hundred K a month. Either to grants or fees or whatever, we need to get to a hundred K a month.
We do.
To be self-sustaining.
Well, and I think we're, it also to plan not only for twenty-six, but to twenty-seven, and not be depleted in our revenue sources going into another year, so.
So I, I mean, that's, that's my concern is, is, I mean, I, I see how you can get through next year, but...
And let me tell you...
That's a big jump.
And let me tell you some other things that were, well, and hopefully, here's the thing, the state wants us to, not wants us, they tell us we have to do these programs, right? And then they give us all this money to start it up, and then they yank it away from us.
But Judge, let them know when you actually do, when you were really short, from when we talked.
Yeah, we did not know until July. We did not get our grant reward until July, so we have no clue, the DOC grant, we have no clue that's going to be until July, so.
Same people that aren't paying us for jail bills?
Yes, exactly. Yep.
I just, I don't believe, and that I don't believe.
No, it's, it's, it's true, I mean, so that makes it really hard to budget, and that's why it was, we didn't have something for you earlier. I have also, I reached out to, so our judicial district consists of Huntington County, Wabash County, Wells County, and Adams County, and I am the administrative judge for those four counties. And I, Adams County has a work release through their jail. Wells County does not have a work release. Their DOC funding has got cut so much that I don't even know if they're going to be able to have a community corrections for right there. Wabash County no longer has a work release, it had been run through their jail, and they built a new jail, the sheriff said, "I'm done with this," so they don't have any. So I have already spoke with Judge Vanderpoel and Judge McCollum in Wabash County, and they want to collaborate with us for work release. I've also reached out to both Judge Antrim and Judge Kerikoff in Wells County. So the third week of September, we actually have a meeting with all four of our counties, and so that's, I put that at the top of our agenda, that that's what we are going to discuss. But Wabash is, as long as we can make this work, they are on board, they want to join us in some way. And part of the reason that it's been difficult to, because we've never closed it off and said, "Oh, no other counties can come to us," or, or anything like that, but part of the reason it becomes difficult is because if you have someone in work release and say they violate, they automatically go to jail. Well...
Who's jail?
Yeah. It's who's jail do they go to? So it's, it's Huntington, right? Because we sell policies, if we get Wabash, say, to buy in to this with us, and they're part of this, and this becomes their policies also, then Leslie calls up the sheriff for Wabash and says, "Come get your inmate," and they'll come and get them. Now that's not possible to do that. So that's, we don't know exactly what that's going to look like, but that's kind of how we're looking at the collaboration right now. So I can't project how much that's going to bring in, but it'll definitely fill more beds.
I was gonna say, what's the bed number that, that you would need to get to that number?
And I don't know, and let me tell you why I don't know, because it changes so, the number of days change. Somebody may be in there sixty days, and somebody may be in there a year and a half, and it fluctuates so much. We have anywhere from, I think we're down to, I think she just said, we just discharged a couple people successfully, and so we're down to eleven, but we've been as high as twenty. We have thirty-two beds, and I, I guess that's something else I wanted to talk about with that, which, one of the other revenue streams that we're looking at is to do transitional housing. So we've discussed transitional housing in, in the past. Part of the reason we've never done it, and our DMHA grant funding was tied to that when we got the O'Donnell Center, however, to put that in as the separate area where we were going to put it, you're causing, you're talking increased staff, I mean, just you're doubling your costs, which until, I, I've always said, until this program is self-sufficient, I'm not starting another program that costs money.
Not unless you get employment with the state office.
Right, 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 and we can. So what we can do, though, now, if we wanna do transitional housing, is we can do it in the facility that we have for work release. So we would have so many beds assigned as work release beds, and so many assigned as transitional housing beds. So that's going to bring in a lot, it's a different, it's a different type of person who would be utilizing that, but the fees are actually more, too, that we end up charging per day, the daily fee is more. So that's something else we're looking at. That, though, is, that will not be implemented, that won't be implemented in the next month, I'll tell you that, because we've gotta have policies and procedures in place.
For, for me, I'm, for me, I'm looking at, it looks like we can get through next year, and, and I won't speak for the rest of the council, but it's something that I would be willing to support, as long as we can put a plan together and say, "We have to have, on average, we have to have this many transitional housing beds, we have to have this many beds by," and let's set a target and say, I mean, ultimately, you have to get there by the end of the year, or you're dead.
Well, we'll have to get to the forty-six thousand, whatever it is that we need, by the beginning of the year. And, and I will, I, I just, I just have to say this, I've said it before, I just need to be clear, because I, I have to be really careful, I cannot, my focus can't be on, my focus as a judge cannot be on filling beds.
Understood.
So that, I have always said, and I'll never change my stance, that unless somebody's eligible and they're willing to go in work release, I won't put them in work release. And everybody who's been eligible for work release and has said they'll do it, I've put them in work release, so that's...
They have to accept it, too, right?
They have to accept it, because if they would rather sit in jail...
But yeah, but I was looking more from the opportunities of what you talked about with Wabash and other opportunities, trying to fill those beds, not necessarily saying you're gonna go.
Yeah, I don't, I just wanted to make that clear.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't think you were, I just wanted to make that clear. And I, I think that, I have a really good relationship with the judges in Wells County, they just have a lot of other issues going on right now, that I think is definitely something they'd be interested in. It won't, yes, and it won't be as, they just, their numbers are a lot lower than ours, they're just, their numbers are a lot lower than ours.
Judge, if I may speak for just a second, to you guys, I sat on this board, and I have sat down with these, these ladies a couple of times, and said in a special meeting, whatever, my first response to them, when, when they said what was needed, I said, "There's no way," okay? But as we talked further in... But as we talked further and and they've worked on these numbers and worked on 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 these plans, we also talked about the impact that this program has made on on the lives of of people here in our community and the lives that they've changed. If you've ever been at a drug court graduation, you know, it's not just that individual that that the life has changed. It's changed from the life of the people all around them, from kids and grandkids and siblings and and all the way around. So I think that we owe it to the community to do our best to try to get there with this, these types of programs. Also, it keeps people from, these same clients could end up back in jail, which would cost us, on the other end of things, the sheriff could probably speak to that.
Leslie's passing out.
So I just wanted to speak up and say, hey, I I'm in support of this as being a board member because I think that I think the program is important, okay? And and I I think there's there's another board member out there, Ryan Wall, out there. He can tell you the same thing. I think that you can speak to maybe the the lives changed and 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 hopefully, maybe even generations changed from from the programs that not just the the community, the work release, but the community supervision as well. And so I I think it's an important work that's being done there. And it's unfortunate what the state has done to us here and some other
Right, it's, yeah.
But but we can't change that setting here, right? And so we got to see if we can get there and and we've got to do our best to to what you guys have done is come up with some good ideas to to fill the gaps. And so thank you.
And what we just, what Leslie just passed out was this was just something I put together at kind of an average of cost savings to the county where we are now. So under our fees that we have now. So as you can see, these are, these are conservative numbers. So they're based on the daily rate that the DOC is supposed to pay, even though they're not, the jail to house inmates. So this cost that I'm basing it on is based on the costs that they provide, which we all know the cost to to house an inmate is is higher. Yeah, so it that these are conservative numbers, but I think that's helpful. And most of the work release participants are defendants who would be would be in jail. They wouldn't be, they wouldn't be out of jail and they probably would not be at the DOC either. So they're going to be people who are staying local. So it really is a cost to the county that we would be bearing. So these are, I believe, are direct costs. So out of 31 months of operation, the number of days we've had participants in there has been 8,389 days. So the rate up until July 1st of this year was $37.50. So if you look at that, that's an average monthly savings of over $10,000 and 121,000, almost 122,000 dollars a year. So with the rate increase, it went up to $42 now, they're saying, costs.
Yeah, well, pays 50.
Right, exactly, right?
You're required to pay anyway.
Yeah, so you can see if it was based on that. Now, I do think that those numbers are even more conservative because I, that's based on 31 months of operation. And when we started back in two, in 2022, we had one person in there and then we had two people in there. I I think a better date range is to see what our numbers actually are is this year. So January 1st of this year through June 30th of this year, and that covers 40 participants. We had an a monthly average of days spent in work release was 384. So at the new rate of $42, that would be almost $200,000 a year in savings.
I believe the sheriff told me it was more like $75 a day to really, the true
That's why, correct. So yeah, if you want to double or triple this number, that's why I said these are very conservative numbers.
So I think we got a jail that's down average. I could take that into what we spent and get you a cost.
I'm sure you could, so yeah, you could do that. So that's, you could see why I said this is just
And that's not the life saved and that's not the human side of things that where we've changed people's lives.
This is completely direct costs.
This is, this is just money, okay? I I don't mean just money, but you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, it is.
The financial part of it. We, it's it's impossible to measure the human side of the of the lives that have been changed and so forth from the program. And I can see the look in your eyes because I know you believe in it, okay? And and so that's, I'm going to say that right up front.
Well, in the EHD, I have those numbers on the next page, which are a lot higher. Now, when you look at, this is electronic home detention. You can't, it's not really comparing apples to apples because I may have somebody on electronic monitoring for six months and if I put him in jail, maybe you maybe would only have been there 30 days. So even on, in math, I say 25% of the costs that we receive in or the cost savings from electronic home detention, we're still, you know, there's $153,000 per year at the $42 rate that we would be saving. That's based on, again, very, very conservative numbers. So this is the, these are the minimum numbers that I think I'd have, I'd have no question backing that those are direct cost savings to the county. So I just wanted to give you that so you could kind of see the numbers where we are. And that we are, I mean, they're continuously looking for for grants. We're looking on ways to increase our collections because we can charge you this amount of money, right? But until you actually pay it and we collect it, it doesn't really mean anything, as you know, the jail. So we do have outstanding, I think, seven
As I say, what's our collection?
So this year for work release was 80%, which is pretty good.
That's actually better than I would have expected.
So in, we were looking at some other ways of collecting. One of the ways we we collect is I do that specifically through violations that are filed and I'll continue to the dates for them to pay. But we're also looking at other ways to collect such as going through a collection agency or doing tax intercepts. There's programs that we're looking into do that. Now, with the collection agencies, you're not going to get it dollar for dollar. And there are some drawbacks, but it's just another thing that we're looking at to try to figure out if it's going to be worth it or not. So we're trying to look at different, you know, all different avenues that we can and 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 catch as much money as we can for the program and
We're also looking at, because our numbers were based on our current staffing model, operation model. So that can change. And looking at the staffing structure, what can we minimize there? Full-time versus part-time? That we also have the ability to do some kind of investment opportunities. In speaking with Department of Corrections and the Financial Auditor, there are ways that we can do some investments, like some of the other county departments do.
So Right now, our staffing model is based on the DMHA grant that we receive, which is a lot of money. So we, they they put certain restrictions on us for staffing that we have to have. That money ends when?
The grant ends September 29th of '26. So our part of it will end, we're estimating in October it will end. But we will still have money for our drug court program and then materials, some of those.
But then we don't necessarily have to follow their staffing guidelines. And with the staffing structure that we have now, we are able to do the transitional housing that I talked about. So it it's, it's really, unless there's something that, boy, just none of us have thought about, there's nothing, and I hate using absolutes, that I can think of that would increase that cost. We try to account for everything in in doing that or in thinking about that, so.
One of the, last week I went to our state association conference and there are a couple of different things that were interesting that happened. The first day, it's always just the Department of Corrections and the directors of Divisional Mental Health Association, Office of Court Services and the Criminal Justice Institute were also present. And so we can see where our efforts are now broadening out to those other departments, which DMA, we've gotten to work pretty close with. So we see how the criminal justice system and the mental health assistance use are linked. And then on Friday, our association voted to start talking to contractual relationship with a lobbying group. Media Corrections is one of the only entities that don't have lobbyists that are at the table advocating for us in our programs. So as far as the state level, those are two very big, interesting things that are happening to help us as a collective across the state.
And I will tell you also for, again, like I said, this is an issue across the state. And one of my really good friends is incoming Indiana Judges Association President. And they're already, they're, them and their lobbyists are meeting this week with state senators to talk about these issues throughout the state. I don't know what good it's going to do.
I know our senator was notified because I called him myself.
Well, and and they've strategically requested certain representatives and senators from certain committees, of course, that that they're meeting with. But and I don't know that it's going to do any good. It's just an example of, you know, this is a statewide issue and I think everybody recognizes that it's a statewide issue. So we're just trying to do what we can here for Huntington to keep keep our community as healthy as we can.
When you meet with the other judges on at your meeting, are they going to have some numbers of like, how many people they would roughly qualify for something like that so you can, I mean, have an idea if they're going to partner with you?
So I think what we could get from Wabash is the number that they, since they've already had a work release facility, they could probably provide us with 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 those numbers. I don't know what their, because it was ran through the jail, so it's a different type of programming. I don't know what their qualifications or their policies were. It's really hard to predict because this was a question, we were starting this, that I was asked all the time, right? How many people do you think? Well, I can look at a list right now. Maybe these people can, but until I look at their criminal history and look at their
There's a lot of variables.
There's, yeah, there's so many. So I think though the Wabash maybe can tell us, give us some idea based on the people that they had in for, I'm hoping.
And if they say yes to to be able to join the program and wanting to join the program.
Would, I'm sorry?
If they would say yes to want to join the program, they can say no.
Right, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. That's, and that's, that's the thing that we we can't control because
I think the best problem we could have is you get enough areas interested that we have that availability problem.
Oh, I agree.
Then you get really picky.
I I agree, I agree. That would, that would definitely be not the ideal situation.
And that's max, what we have capability of right now, what you told us, at 30?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two?
In the, what is it, 32?
It's so, in the building that we're in now, there's 32.
Yeah.
And the Sacred Heart Building, which initially we were talking about transitional housing over there, there's also 32 minutes slots.
It could be expanded.
It could be expanded, but then we're talking expanding costs. And again, until we've, we're self-sufficient, I don't even want to
100%.
Talk about expanding into more space. So that's kind of what's kept us from doing it before. And we didn't know, I mean, our work release program is so new. It's hard to determine, you know, how many people are really going to to be in it. And it's, it's increased because also the attorneys get more used to recommending it to their clients, word of mouth travels. It's part of the reason with the fee, we've got to watch it because we do not want it to be, oh, that's going to cost you so much, just sit in jail. So I mean, inmates, defendants talk. I mean, they they talk a lot, so they know what's going on. But it does take a little while just to build up that that reputation of, okay, this is what, these are the services that they are providing and it really is helpful if you want to be helped.
And some of the other factors, when you talk about the human side, is how many are indigent? So we're starting from scratch to get them employed. And can they read and write? Do they have their GED? What employers in Huntington County or in the surrounding counties will let them work for them without a GED?
Or with a felony?
Or with a felony, yeah. And then there's also, under our corrections umbrella, especially for EHD, we have those that are disabled, they're on a fixed income. So we talk about collection rate. There are other factors that, you know, we have to balance there.
And I do just want to say this, just because it just happened tonight. Drug court is part of our DOC grant also. We get money for drug court. And we were, they should, of course, cut that too, so we didn't get enough. But we were just notified today that the Community Foundation, the grant with the settlement money, we got enough to cover that for next year, which is great news. That's great. So we're just really, really happy about that. So
Good deal.
That a leading sum, it was like $53,000, so it's a good chunk.
That's great.
Yeah.
Great news.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
No, I think, yeah, I'd just like to see kind of, let's, let's see how this progresses. I mean, we've got, still got time this year. I just want to make sure that we don't wake up next June and we've, we've closed, we're done.
I don't want to either because that really changes my options in court, which really changes behavior.
But I like, I I liked everything I heard about it.
And please, I mean, feel free to reach out to any of us if questions come up because I know there's a lot, you guys have a lot to do, so.
How many's Whitley County housing there in their work release, do you know?
There's like 70 now, though, right? They have the capacity for 80.
Yeah, they have that old hotel.
Yeah, we, we did tour it, I was really impressed with theirs. And theirs was pretty mature when we went through it.
Yeah, and they have transitional housing.
Yes, they started transitional housing as well, so.
So we're hoping to do that here. All right, well, thank you, appreciate it.
So I don't think we adjourn, right? Or do we do adjourn this? Okay, so I'll make a motion.
I'll make it.
Jamie, taken by Keith, all in favor?
Ah, yes.
All right.
September?
September, that's a daily meeting?